At this time, at 6:05, the Rodney Board of Education Work Session is in order. The Board of Education is in compliance with Chapter 231 of the Public Laws of 1975 entitled, The Open Public Meetings Act. The time being location of this meeting was appropriately advertised by identifying retrospect as well as posting notices in the barrow hall. Rodney Post Office, Marygold School, Align Bingham School, Grace Darian School, and the Rodney Public District, School District website. At this time, we have roll call, please.
Tricia DeR, Angel Levy, Charles Buckhahn, Neil Davidson, Amy Farrelly, Maria Panzarella, Tricia Smith, Samantha Spalding, and Cora.
All right, also President Mark Iannucci, Superintendent Dr. Sean McCarron, Business Administrator Board Secretary, and Supervisor Billy Brown, Fusch Brunner at this time. We would welcome a brief presentation by Mr. Colavita, our auditor, for his yearly presentation.
Thank you. For the first time in years, I don't have two meetings tonight.
All right.
Moves to tomorrow night.
That doesn't mean that you're gonna sit here for an hour, right?
No.
No, I'm just kidding.
No, I'm just thinking to get home to be some hour. Okay, let me go through the normal brief presentation. This large document is called a CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. It's your document, your responsibility. You pass the ball to us to prepare it for you. And the audit report is the smaller document, which in your computers now, I have to explain that it's behind where the large document ends. There's about a 10-page one in the back. We'll get into that in a second. Now, in this CAFR, you have three sets of books.
Just so you guys know, under your work session attachments, the CAFR is the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report.
Thank you.
C-A-F-R, short.
I'm gonna have to send these to the teachers.
When is the Rodney session?
That's all I want.
Whenever you're ready.
Yeah.
So these are new, huh?
Yes.
Since July, we've gone paperless in some ways.
I lie to my grandchildren and say I don't know how to text, so I don't have to dig in.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so this document again has three sets of books theoretically. One is the budget basis, one is the generally accepted accounting principle basis, and then you have GASBIE 34, the government accounting standards board. I'm gonna shorten this for you. The one on the front, the GASBIE 34, and the GAAP balance sheet, you don't run your business on those statements. You run your business on the budget basis, which is, and I'll tell you the page, 55, page 55 through 60. That's how you run your business, the budget. And in there, you will arrive at your end fund balance, which is in relatively good shape. Now, we can get into that in a minute. I put together a very small presentation here, just to keep my notes straight from when I made them up earlier. In the next year, you have three ROD grants. They're the capital project grants. There's gonna be a lot of work for your district. Now, fortunately, after all the changeover you had in the last several years, I've known nothing but changeover since I've been here. Now you have the energy, you have three people in place going into the second year. So while the ROD grants present quite a bit of paperwork, you have the staff and the energy to deal with it. They're gonna be very important projects for you, especially upgrades of all preschools really. Now, your excess surplus is something I wanna bring your attention, so you don't get in trouble with your budget. It says excess surplus of a certain amount, and it sounds like a lot of money, and you'll be required to put that in the next budget, and you have to think of a subsequent budget. Now, without tying you up, I just want you to know that I've had discussions with Superintendent and Business Administrator on how to manage the excess surplus, and they have a plan. So when you see excess surplus, I don't want you to think that it's a negative or that it's a pot of gold, it isn't, because you have to go from year to year in your budgets. And some of you I know have seen where you had a lot one year, and then all of a sudden you didn't, and you had to take serious measures to deal with your budgets from time to time. You need to look to your professionals in-house on how to manage these numbers, and you should direct your questions to them, so that you don't get any wrong impressions. I have a very good handle of where you're at, because the numbers I just put together, I'm the last person to really see the numbers. Now, regarding the food service, the way costs get charged, your food service needed 23,500 this year, but the remaining balance is quite low. I've spoken to the Superintendent and the Business Administrator about that also. They have to do some maneuvering in the food service fund to keep it afloat this year, or you have to put in a larger subsidy going back two years ago, where it served life best and probably higher. So any questions, we would deal with that, and they would of course make their suggestions to you. Now we get to, before we get to the final responsibility of the Board, I want to say your statutory requirement is just to know what basically is in here, the little document in the back, behind the CAFR.
Do you have a page number, or is it just, it starts over?
Well, actually, it starts over. There are two separate documents. You have one, because it's in here.
Okay. You have the second one, which under attachments is listed as auditors, management report.
So page nine is the page I wanna take you to.
Oh, yeah.
To get your statutory requirement, you only have to know what we reported as a finding. Now, over the years, you've had some, with the changeover, you had a couple of other findings and little problems. You changed accounting systems mid-year, one year, and right now, you're in a good place. The only finding you have is something to do with the DRTRS, that's the transportation report. So we're just presenting that there was one minor glitch in that, and nothing to be concerned with, however I tell you. And you just have to make sure that corrective action plan of this one little item is presented to you within so many days, and you have plenty of time.
And also, the finding was from 2013, 2014.
Yes.
So it was the last school year. And in that, it's very specific timelines that need to be met. So October 15th is the deadline for all transportation. The report isn't due until the end of October, so we actually just submitted our new one currently. And as he said, it was one minor finding, meaning the student who started transportation after October 15th, but before October 30th, was included in on that report. That shouldn't have been included.
So the message is, you're in a good place. And again, I keep using the word turnover, after having so much turnover, and some fiscal problems, and some repairs being needed in your schools, you're gonna be in a very good position from here on today, barring any other budgetary issues that you folks have to deal with. So at this time, I wanna answer any question you might have, because I don't get to see you often if you have any questions. Otherwise, it's just the gobbledygook in these documents. Again, you only have one minor finding, you're in good shape. I don't have much to tell you. In the past years, I've had more to tell, this year I don't.
You sure did.
Thank you to our administration as well.
Yeah?
Yes, again, we're in a good place right now. Hope you expect that way.
Does anybody have any questions?
No.
Just here, under food service, he stated that, you know, we'll need to come up with a plan for how we're gonna match that. Part of it's what we've already put in place in terms of, luckily with Black Forest Big Regional, realigning our food service staff, as far as hours that are at work than the time that's put into food service, and looking at all other options able to be brought in through food service. So hopefully, those plans that were put in place last year, knowing that this is what we were gonna find from 13, 14, will hopefully see a difference in 14, 15.
And you already have seen some difference, correct?
Yes.
And I believe that, if everything was going well, if I'm not mistaken, numbers were good.
With food service, yes.
Yeah.
See, I'm in the past, so I'm looking at the past.
Right. Hey, we're looking.
Yes, yes.
I wanted to bring it up to you.
No, absolutely.
So you don't get, you know, bushwhacked with a fiscal problem.
Yes, no, we appreciate it.
Cause you were telling me, I need a plan, I'm like, oh, we have a plan in place, this is the worst. We did, oh, fine, oh, this is what we're doing.
And again, you have to watch out for excess surplus. You can get too giddy over that number, because there's a lot of other, there are a lot of factors that go into it, and they're aware of what they are.
And we have a lot going on right now with the ROD grants, and everyone else that...
Well, that was the other thing with the ROD grants, we discussed the procedure of how to come up with your match.
We'll be continuing to discuss that procedure. There's a ton of deals to do.
Since that's clearly the worst, I have my understanding, but I don't know what you're going to do, but you don't need me to go into that now. And if you ever have any other questions, you want me to come to a meeting any other time, and I'm always down, I'm only down the street about seven minutes, so.
I know how the extension involved is all this stuff, so.
Okay.
And that won't call it.
That's why we pay the big bucks. All right, so the surplus.
Make sure you, the matching funds for the ROD grant down payment is subsequent to last year, but you need to have that, and they know that, so.
All right, thank you for your time, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
A pleasure, what a pleasure.
Go home and have a warm dinner.
I'm actually going to get home at dinner time this time of year, it's hot. Good night, Nancy.
Good night, have a good holiday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Balance the budget for next year as well. You always need to make sure the excess surplus annual.
All right, so the only other thing on our agenda is to go over our regular meeting agenda, so we can go through this, the different areas. Go ahead.
My superintendent's report is in here, put it back to me. What you got? I just want you to have a hard copy.
Look, we got the hard copy. It's okay, Amy's happy, that's all that matters.
I promise. Is he home?
Yes, sir.
All the way.
I'm assuming he's gonna watch. He's not gonna be around. It's just locked up.
Oh, no.
But I'm gonna tell you something right now, that's off of the best part, Coach went to the hospital with him, I think it says a whole lot about the choices that we made.
Well, actually, Naomi, before we get busy, she just said, please give my thanks to Mr. Winkie, Mr. Talafaro for their quick response and care for Brian.
Yeah, see that? Head to head with another Friday. A lot of blood.
Feeling messy, so.
What? Lot of blood.
Yeah.
A lot.
Appreciate it. Okay, so I am going to, is the correspondence attached?
Correspondence is listed within the year attachment. You'll see underneath reports, you'll see correspondence, reports, and finance.
All right, so, okay, let's move on to, let's talk about reports. There was a correspondence attached. Did you wanna know about that, Naomi?
Well, I didn't have a chance to read, I didn't have any questions.
The correspondence.
I just came across my desk this week, so it's not something I had a chance to reach out to.
Under the superintendent's report?
No.
Under correspondence.
Okay.
The F Foundation letter?
Okay.
They're requesting, Ms. Hornibrook is requesting that, she would like a member of the Board of Education, several teachers, to sit on their board.
Well, I know, I served as a liaison when the education foundation first began, in a kind of fizzle way.
I would be willing if there's no, I mean, I...
I mean, it's good to have somebody there.
I mean, I did attend a few meetings, too. Unfortunately, I don't have the time to, to, you know, and we can, we can absolutely ask our teachers to do it, but however, it's not required that any of them do it, but if there's a board member who's willing, I mean, you just need to remember that we're just there to listen, not speak on behalf of the board.
Yeah, why would they want them on the board as opposed to just like a liaison?
I think, I think that's a misuse of words, I don't think they want you on the board of the exact...
Oh, I know there's only like, it's only like her and Mike right now.
I would be, no, I would be willing to tell you.
Would you like her to come out before I even do it, or do you want to speak with her? Why don't you and Bray speak with her? I wanna make sure we do it.
I mean, I know, from my standpoint, when education foundation first began, it was, of course, it was during a time where we still had budgetary concerns.
Administration.
Right, there were a lot of things, you know, going on, and it was just, it was a good way for me to give some information to them that was pertinent to the coordination situations and concerns, and help them understand a lot, and get that back out to, you know, their contacts.
And I think your sequence is teacher input, assistant, mentoring, things like that.
Sure.
It can be a daunting process for some of them, if you're not really sure what the needs are.
And I just wanna say that, not to cut you off, but Ms. Iannucci and myself have met with previous members of the Rodney Education Foundation, the previous president, and, you know, like, we have offered our assistance, we have offered, you know, any time to help, you know, like I said, I'm not available, we've offered, we've met with them whenever they needed to, so it's not like we're not, I was under the impression that they were thinking, when I, Mr. Nigliotti called me over the summer, since they didn't have any help, they were thinking of maybe adding, like, becoming like a committee of the PTA if possible, and I told them to reach out to, you know, Kristin Moore, our president, and that's the last I heard until this. So I don't know necessarily where this came from, this is like out of that field for me, but if you're willing to...
I'd like to, you know, what's mine, I would like to, I'd like to reach out.
Yeah, let me know, but she actually was, I've had, I don't know how I ended up there, I mean, she was, she's very passionate about speaking.
Well, that's, that's fine.
And so I think that she's trying to embrace it and make it better.
But I just, I wanna make sure that she understands that we can't, we can't require teachers to be there, so Ms. Iannucci will reach out, and then hold, hold...
Let me know, okay.
All right. So then Superintendent's report is in front of us, Secretaries' report, Principals' report, any issues with reports?
The only thing we might not have this evening, I believe, talk to Mr. Pelear, some of the conflicts with the RMI, I guess there's some playoff game tonight, like, tonight?
Championship.
Some of the members may come today to discuss, I'm not sure if any members, any student council members come this evening?
No, they're...
No.
Yeah.
They're all, like, three or four of them.
There's a lot of questions going on, whatever it is, we might not have it. Students' presentation slides, we'll maybe make that up, maybe simply.
They have to put on a talent show.
What's that?
They have to put on a talent show.
Absolutely, cool, Amy.
We've done this.
We've done that this year.
Remembering all right now?
Get ready, get ready.
Go for it.
I think it looked like Mr. Pelear practiced that one, so I'm sure we...
Throw you right under the bus there.
So that's all, I just put that on report, did everyone present, but it wasn't in that. So any other questions about this report?
At this time, are there any questions on reports? If not, we have property and transportation, we have some use of facility, and the field trips being approved, looks like quite a few field trips are being approved for the year.
We'd ask for the same with busing requirements.
They have to, they have to stop.
We gave them a deadline of November 15th to have anything submitted to us, we could go through it in the next three years, so we can give you, last year we ran into some problems with getting busing for not only sporting events, but for our field trips, because we didn't have the budget, like, we didn't have the timeframe.
Right.
We were getting something approved in, you know, February for our April trip, it doesn't give the bus company much time, so we decided we could have it planned out, have it in by November, so we can, you know, this thing's done, and we lock in the buses for the same.
So here's a question, is it possible for us to have, I'm sure it exists somewhere, a spreadsheet that shows the clubs and after-school activities that they had, I mean, who they had accommodated, meaning what grades they had accommodated? Because I don't think parents know when that's, like, an overall, like, this is something of...
It is in the student handbook, it is, it holds, it'll tell you what activities, like, fourth, fifth graders are allowed, you know, can participate in, plus fourth through eighth graders can participate in, that is in the handbook.
It is.
And Mr., if you can modify the term, Mr. Iannucci posed my intention last week, and moving forward, we're gonna send him a hard copy, we'll also post it on the website, anything that is offered, whether it's sport-related, extracurricular, or club, and the age levels, so that more parents are aware. We kinda, they would do the sign-ups in the lunchroom, and it was kind of, but sometimes, you know, it's good feedback, because we don't realize that parents might wanna push their child into a certain club, or, you know, just so they're aware, so we're gonna get that communication here.
I just wanna also say, I know Mr. Iannucci doesn't do social media, but I can tell you that a lot of our parents, don't forget to utilize that outlet as well. You know, Facebook's right on their phone, real quick, that they'd have to punch in the website, have internet access, you know what I mean, but, so don't forget, you could also utilize that as a tool. No, that's what I needed, I, 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 I know.
I'm right there when you...
Just have to switch your arm a little bit.
Just saying.
That's all. And that's why I'm here.
I moved down, you know, my Facebook account.
But we don't, if you would, if you would like something...
I just don't know what, I don't know, I guess just as a whole, like, what does it look like?
Okay.
And honestly, I don't know that, I don't know that, you know, Lynn or Chaz would have, they have no inkling as to what that looks like, because they wouldn't get it from a kid, from a child.
Right. And I guess students can't, okay, we see...
So just, if it's a quick spreadsheet, I might ask if something's created, if it does, and it says, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, but I didn't know.
Well, it's, it's, it's gonna be, I said it's a file sitting somewhere.
Whoever, person who's running every other club sport, they make a flyer with the tentative dates, you know, the amount of sessions, the times, that it would run, age groups, that it would be offered to, and we, again, put that flyer on Facebook, the website, and send it up in the Brown, Brown and Booth.
That's cool, I was just thinking of the, like, what made me think of it was the environmental club, asking for approval, that's what triggered it in my head, that I was like, oh, well, what grade does that?
Right.
That's what made me think of it.
Almost like, almost like a scope and sequence, you know, we're back to, we're back to listing everything, and what grade levels are part of that, so you can see, you have a broad picture of where the clubs and athletics and everything, and the music department are into play, and you can kind of see a cross-section of where you're, where you need to involve more students, where you have an overabundance of participation, I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, it's moving forward, looking forward to, I think, communicating that.
If we see that there's something like, like you said, that there's too much, I mean, maybe there, maybe there needs to be some help for that person, you know what I mean?
Yeah, you gotta be very supportive of that.
If there's more particular...
And if there's not, and off interest, maybe we need to...
Think of something else.
Yeah, feel like, we did have access numbers, especially in fourth, fifth, third grade with band corps, so they able to shift some things around, and now we have two people really, one of them, absolutely.
And I hear wonderful, wonderful.
I'm sure you'll all be there December 4th.
Yeah.
I'm sure, December 4th, you're starting to sound like songs now. On Mondays, you're starting to...
That's amazing. All right, so...
You know what, that's, I don't think it's wrong, but he just said something, made you think something. So, you know how you just said December 4th? Is there a way, and you can tell me to be quiet, or no, maybe like, not only with regard to the clubs and the sports, but can we get like, like the Board, I know that if, my kids aren't involved in band corps, so I have no idea that's any place, but I would love to go, and I'm actually off that month. So can we get like, I don't know, just maybe, I don't know, I know that we used to get like a weekly update, just like something, like, that would just give us advance notice of something, or if something happened, you know, like maybe every Friday, you know, just do a quick email, and say, listen, hey guys, this is what happened this week, or, you know, if there were any incidents.
A weekly, or hey, there's a basketball game, home baseball game, home music, because I feel Be and Chaz would go last year, and then I have a meeting...
Yes, or just, hey, we have a big, you know, because I just feel like, I would, if you wouldn't have said that, I would have never known, and I would have absolutely liked to go, like, maybe just an update as to things that just happened, or things that aren't happening. You know what, because, yeah. It's not on there. It is on the website, right? The calendar's on there, but the things aren't on there.
I don't like that calendar.
Nothing's on there. Take that calendar off.
That's good, let's, let's...
Brooke, did you say, you know, so you want it in the weekly bulletin?
Yeah, or just, yeah, for Board members only, like, because again, you're saying Chaz and Lynn wouldn't know that, I would know the band corps as well, so...
Some kids are old now.
Chaz, maybe you want to come watch the band corps, or maybe you want to come watch this sporting event, or, you know what I mean?
So we'll look for that every Friday?
Sure.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else?
Email that to you?
Email, that's how we used to get it, we used to get it, email, that's not...
The prior administration would use to do that, so that's what she means by prior. Mr. Iannucci, though, I will go on record, was never asked to do that.
Right, absolutely, and I'm thinking, like, now that I have three kinds of evenings and I know, you know, maybe I would, but you know what I noticed, like, somebody pointed out on Facebook that all the girls field hockey games were put on there, none of the soccer games were, so I just feel like, you know, some things are left, if each individual coach is doing it, some coaches may not have that same desire to put it out, so, yeah.
I have a quick question.
Sure.
April, is this April 3rd? It looks like Lenny and the Distinction are going to run the demo house for some charity. Are there people allowed to go besides them, or members allowed to join in, or how's that?
It'd be a problem, depending on the transportation.
She lives there, she walks, she works there.
I'm just saying, I don't know, but you can bus, but...
There's no reason why you can't check on them.
And that's the type of thing that I think that this Board, like, wants to know, like, you know, I might not, like, you know, I would like to show the support for all of our students and our teachers who have worked so hard with band and corps, is that I can give up an hour of my time, you know what I mean, on December 4th to go there, you know what I mean? Angel works, hey, on her lunch hour, she knows they're gonna be there, she can walk over. Like, I would like to, I feel like this Board would like to be a little bit more welcome, not like, why are they, why are they coming? They're, we're coming because we support everything that you all do.
We care, we, we care.
No, we're not, we're on reports.
No, I thought we were on...
I thought we were on field trips.
Okay, well, on field trips, never mind, all right.
Number seven, Canyon Charter School Leadership, that's us paying the school director?
Yes, the Rodney's resident, who heads the charter school.
Any, any other questions under property and transportation, excuse me? Okay, Mr. Iwone, do I need to read that resolution, allow number seven? Yeah? All right.
Do you want, do you want, real quick, number seven is just comprehensive maintenance plan, which has to be submitted to the state annually, so that's just a resolution that goes along with it, and that's stating that we are taking care of our facilities on the county basis. Part of that will then tie into the long-range facility plan, which means over the course of the next five, 10 years, whether, they have you outline what you would do if you were doing every single thing within your facilities, so that's updated annually as well, and that has to be submitted with board resolutions to the county office.
So, I was just saying, I'll do like numbers one through six, and then I'll do seven alone, because I need to read that.
And then eight and nine are the other two, did you want to discuss those with the...
Well, we probably should, talk about number eight out loud, so the public knows what we're doing, our plans are.
With number eight, it's the approval, approved purchase of a 30-passenger school bus through Van Con, which is a part of the corporate pricing system in the state of New Jersey. One of the things that we looked at is, within our district, there's many tons that we have to transport a very small number of students, whether it be one or two students. The cost of that can range anywhere from 25 to 30,000 annually, when everything is said and done. The cost of a bus will not exceed $50,000, and the bus will last for 15 years, is usually the lifespan of a bus in the state of New Jersey, before you have to stop using it. You're allowed to use a bus for 15 years before it has to go out of... The cost of a bus will not exceed fifty thousand dollars, and the bus will last for fifteen years, is usually the lifespan of a bus in the state of New Jersey, before you have to stop using it. You're allowed to use a bus for fifteen years before it has to go out of commission and be sold, or whatever. So, by doing this, what we'd be paying, it'd be paying for itself over the course of two years, it would be operated within the district. The turnaround for getting a bus is anywhere from three to six weeks, is what I was told. They will, and it would arrive, and from there, what we would do is, we might be able to give up some of our smaller runs that we're currently paying, per day for, and we'd be able to run that operation here. It would also allow us with, if it was available, after taking care of daily needs, we might be able to use it for smaller field trips. So, in the case of, example, men and women in distinction, in some cases, that's, it's great, we have four of the thirty students who participate in it. But in certain situations, it would be available to them if they were taking fifteen or twenty kids here or there. Athletics, might be able to use partially for that, so there's other uses that we'd have for that purchase as well.
And can you just also state how we looked into, what happened when we looked into buses, how we were looking at a smaller one, but then...
One of the things we were looking at was, we were looking at a smaller vehicle, we were looking for maybe like a van, or something tiny. The price difference was only about a fifteen thousand dollar price difference, and on top of that, when we spoke with the, our insurance group, they stated that they always push their clients, their, their clients, to get school buses because of the structure and the way that they're built. And for them, vans don't have the extra bars going through them, which it's safer to have a school bus than it is to have a van in that situation. Not that vans aren't safe, I don't, you know, vans are always very safe, but in, in case of accident or injury, it's safer on a school bus than it would be on a van. And also, one of the reasons why we didn't look at a smaller van, like a sixteen-passenger, was that the price difference was only two thousand dollars, two to three thousand dollars in the bid, to go from a sixteen-passenger to a thirty-passenger. And by having a thirty-passenger van, bus, we'd have more opportunities to use it throughout the course of the year.
So, we thought, as a board, that it would make more sense to have a bigger bus, especially if it was only a couple thousand dollars.
Did we solve the problem of where we're housing this vehicle?
That has still been a discussion in regards to where we'd be housing it. We might be reaching out to the borough as well, to see if there's any space or locations available within Runnymede that we'd be able to house it. But we were also waiting for, the board, we're where the board was all excited, you know, excited for this opportunity. We wanted to make sure that everything was going through before we started making those final arrangements.
Well, when you say house, are you looking for someone, somewhere in New York? Because I think that's very...
No, that's, no, not, not just to, to park it safely. A secure parking area. Yeah, but that's not, that's not secure. Not be safer here.
Well, it's, well, well, either, there or here, the, it's under surveillance, that's why I thought...
So, it doesn't... No, I mean, I don't think this is a security, you know, it's not fenced in, gated off.
Well, and we, we talked about some options, Mr. Burner and I, we're actually creating something on-site here at Volt's where we could have it fenced in.
I think it would make more sense to have it here than anywhere else.
Yeah, we were wait, we were just waiting, if we could finalize this before we opened up.
That was, that was...
So, we'll start that, we'll start that tomorrow.
All right.
And you and I talked about that.
I'm sure that someone... Yeah, we did, we asked you to do that.
So, we will have more information on December, end of December.
Yeah, and I, and I know, we discussed as far as where the borough lot parks, the borough parks their vehicles.
Yep.
Down in the Crescent, it is gated off, it is locked, it is secure now.
I wouldn't put, no.
Just stay in there, really sure.
I'd rather it be right here and set it down, front of the...
Yeah, across the year.
We'll look at everything, we'll, we'll talk about the options we do.
Okay, so, thank you for that information. Personnel, any issues, any concerns? No?
We will have, hopefully, a couple of the upcoming personnel agents for December. If we're looking for long-term, you know, I don't know if we'll have all three of them done, but we'll have at least one done, you know, for that.
For the long-term?
For long-term, yeah.
Substitute.
Substitute, okay.
Yeah, all, all very close, too.
If there's no questions there, we'll move on to finance. Any questions on the finance?
I'm still reading some.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
I don't know whether this backs into this, and I know with our, our auditors reporting, just talking about minor issues in system three thousand, and then I'm seeing here under number, where is it, six? Is that have anything to do with this?
No, at all, no.
Okay.
And one of the reasons, just so you're aware, and I'm, I'm learning things very quickly, at lightning speed, but with system three thousand, when it says minor issues with system three thousand, the accounting software, it's as good as the information that's put into it. And there's been, as he was saying, there's been a lot of turnover in many cases, so even when he's going through his audit, he might be going back to a two thousand eleven grant. And for me, it, it's very black and white, yet when you put it in the accounting system, if you put it incorrectly, and then it's not facted out correctly and re-put in the proper way, it's not gonna be correct unless there's an audit adjustment that's just overriding it. And in many of those cases, you're talking eleven, twelve school year, twelve, thirteen, those years have already been closed out. So, our ability to even go back in, which is why we were spending a lot of time looking at older things, which was good, because as he said, other things were in order, and he was able to locate those things quickly. So, they spent their time trying to clean everything else up as nice as possible, so that way all the numbers would be in place.
Okay, anyone else? Other curriculum? So, we have all of our school choice information in, see what, see what they say?
On the school website, if you go on the main page of the school website, all of our school choice information is listed.
It's all up to date, because...
It's all up to date, we currently have eleven students who are school choice students, and that we are stuck with that number for next year, which means that the only time we can allow school choice students in is if a student either leaves the district as number one, or number two, a student is, I was about to say retiring, a student is graduating from the school, which would mean that they're leaving eighth grade. This year, we currently, as of right now, all of our students are returning, we only have one student who is currently in eighth grade, who will be leaving at the end of the year, so that only leaves for one opening. On the school choice paperwork that states how many seats we have, you'll see that we only have seats for next year in grades one, two, and four. In grade one, it lists two seats are available, in grade two, it lists four, and in grade, in grade four, it lists ten. The way in which we come up with that number is, we look at each grade level as a whole.
Grade three is like...
We look at the total number of students that we have in that grade, anything, once it hits eighty-eight, the grade level is shut off. If the number is under eighty-eight, and it might depend on the school that the student is at. So, for example, I know that it was discussed previously that the numbers at one elementary school might be larger than the other. So, if the numbers for first grade next year might be larger in one elementary school, but we still have openings, that means that we have openings in the other elementary school.
Right.
So, if we accept a student as a school choice student under that grade level, we would be telling them, okay, well, we're accepting you, and you will be at Downing, or you will be at Bingham, in that situation. So, and then grade three this year, currently, we have ten. So, although the total number's sixteen, we can actually only accept one. And then, of course, we'll still accept applications on a first couple...
When do we find out if they, when, what if they don't, what if the school choice students who are currently in the district don't wanna be here anymore?
We, as of right now, we always make phone calls towards the middle of December as we get our application.
Right, because the applications are due soon for next year.
At that time, in most cases, in my experience, parents are gonna tell me that their children will be returning, as...
We haven't had any, we haven't had any way.
No.
We haven't had any school students study.
Now, that's have to resubmit, you should...
Yeah, they resubmit every year.
They, they don't submit the full application.
The application, but they have, they have to say they're coming back for it.
They have to say they're coming back and that they're returning.
We haven't had any students since we started the school choice program.
I have a question, now, would that number change, that number's not gonna change depending on people moving into the district, that number would not change?
Even if we can accommodate sixty students, the number stays at, now, for other districts, that's been a financial hardship for them, because of the fact that they rely on school choice and building their programs, and if their numbers are flat, they can't do anything with that. In our situation, we've done it to supplement, but we're not paying staff salaries with that money.
Now, is there anything in the wind as far as Department of Ed saying, or county students saying that these, this number can change in the future?
That's been the past two years.
Okay.
The only reason why our number increased was due to current students who remained at the end of last year.
So, if you didn't get in on the ground floor, you didn't, out of luck, right?
However, they can submit if we get on a waiting list, just in case it happens, correct?
That's true.
Okay.
Okay. Policy and public relations.
I have a question.
Yes?
Number one, government school plastic will pay as one racer.
Yes. Do you want to give me some pennies for standing?
Of course.
Okay.
My question, is that something that was in the...
Does the weed care club at Downing do this? The weed care club wasn't really evident at Downing, and so they started it this year, and this is...
No, it wasn't really evident at Downing.
It wasn't at Downing, it started this year, and this is something that the, the teacher who started it at Downing did.
Because there were a lot of things that Bingham did to Downing.
That Downing did, though.
And I think that's where I'm kinda going with this, because honestly, they're both elementary schools.
Place a talent show?
You need to have everything the same on both sides, I really do not like the, you know, the some things, you know, the some things, and there's no...
The disparity, yeah, the disparity between the school stuffs create a lot of...
Right.
That's, the start is better, it's going off the balance.
It really needs to be.
Yeah, well, that's what we're doing here, I know.
Yeah, um, after, like, my first year, I knew this, at Bingham did have the weed care club and Downing did not, so I did ask for volunteers from Downing to join up. I think it was like on the first day of school, the first in service to join up, De Crisilla really had it at Bingham, I think several other volunteers. So, we did have some volunteers from Downing step up, and they said they were just gonna take on some of the, it's a lot, they do a lot, so I said, that's fine, start small, you know, baby steps, whatever. So, I think if there's ten things that got approved in September for the weed care club at Bingham, maybe Downing's doing seven. But then they also decided to do this petty pro pasta that Bingham wasn't doing, they just had interest in it, and they wanted to try something new, so now it might be like Downing's doing eight activities and Bingham's doing ten. But that was the idea, like, look, it's a great thing happening at Bingham, let's make sure that Downing, you know, is interested in doing it too. So, I thought that was great that people stepped up from Downing to join the weed care club.
Oh, great, and at some point, I would hope that you would see the same...
Activities.
Same activities on both, so would just be...
I wonder that that's fair, though.
Why?
Because it's no different than me having two different kids in two different kindergarten classes, with two different teachers. They do the, they do the same work in different ways, like...
However, it's not fair that they get, that the Bingham kids get a talent show, the Downing kids don't, and like...
But they should have, they should have too, that was me, too. If one, if one person volunteers and is more comfortable, and that is their passion to raise funds for cancer or whatever, and the other one, theirs is to raise animals for the SPCA, then so be it. I mean, as long as there's generosity...
Just please keep in mind, too, that Downing works with a very, almost skeletal crew.
Right.
If you look at the numbers of staff, you, you have staff members at Bingham, you not only have regular education, special education, structural associates, you have three ti, almost three times the man and woman power at one building compared to Downing, when you go there, it's like...
Right, I think it...
That's understood, but the students, that the IED, IED should not have the same opportunities as students there.
I'm talking about the club, though, but you, if, if the passion for the person is there is one...
We already have the club, the clubs are there, the clubs are the done deal, the club, the club's happening, you know, and the clubs, but, but there also are several events, big events that happen at one school, not the other school, and I personally know, like a talent show, that's huge. So, there's a talent show for Bingham kids, but not for Downing kids.
I think it needs to be equal, to equal level, and to even broaden a little bit more, you have kids that are going kindergarten through third grade that are in Downing, kindergarten through third grade who are in Bingham. Then you come here, and you're all in a mix, you need to have some little more togetherness, so to speak.
Prior to coming here.
Exactly. I mean, yeah, you get with the ROI, because you have kids that play on sports from both sides of town, you know, yada, yada, but this is community, and I think that it should be more, more equality between the two...
Maybe one camp, don't even talk about that.
Elementary schools, and I applaud Downing for, for stepping up and starting to do this, but I would just hope that eventually we go that route where it's not...
There are a lot of things that, like, we started the student book club last year, that's at both schools, we started the state youth patrol last year, that's at both schools. I mean, the goal is, many, many things should be uniform, I totally agree with you. And then what Amy had mentioned, though, like, if we had a staff member that says, I'm really excited about this, right, you don't wanna squash that either, because it, it's a lot of extra work, they volunteer their services, and, you know, it is like the art of the profession sometimes, like, you don't wanna take the wind out of anyone's sails either, but I agree, it's like, this has to be like a balance, and we are working toward doing that as much as possible.
Because here, the, the show for Bingham was here, right?
That was my issue.
But you mentioned, we're not...
That was my issue. It was together.
So, the Bingham talent show is here, one, one talent show, Bingham, Downing, we're, it's gonna be a lot...
You know, I think we're talking about apples and oranges here, you know, we're talking about clubs versus activities.
Unity is, I think.
I, 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 I get that, I understand what you're saying, and I agree with Amy, if a, if a club is established in both buildings, or you have a weed care boat, it's up to the advisor of the club in each building to say, okay, you know, we're hopefully gonna have ten activities through the course of the school year, and it's up to the advisor to decide what those activities within that club will be. I think Sam's point was to make this just, it's a, it's an activity within, right, an event versus a club, and I, you know, I agree.
I just want all of our children, I mean, obviously, I'm the one who's buying here, but I want all of our children, because I know when I went to Downing, I had just as many opportunities as the people, as the students, I think.
And also, and it also depends on how your staff is spread around the district, you know, it was different back then.
It's different.
Absolutely.
It's different, when...
Two different special area teachers in each building, so, and that's...
Each building.
It is, that was a whole different, when it says, I was part of the weed care club, and we did out, since I'm in the stand, and you say, I was part of the weed care club, and we did this, okay, that's great, you both did. But I think, like, the events thing is where we need to be a little more fair.
I have a question, I was at the minute, so I'm thinking, Mrs. Jazzy, Longwood Gardens, is there a way that we can make it district-wide known? What, is that still happening, since we...
Yes.
We need to let...
We post it on a channel link, so that it can be...
Yes.
Can we put it on our Facebook page?
Oh, I have put it on, but I, and I'm gonna repost it, it's been a while, like, I think that we were first awarded it, I think I put it out, and I put some flyers out, but I, I, Michelle just asked me to, you know, just repost it, and...
Will, will we...
You sent a flyer or something?
I mean, like, to both parents, too? Like, not just Bingham, like, so that it goes district-wide, so that everybody knows...
Yeah, that's fine.
To make it a true running day, it's like, you know what I mean?
It could be global connect.
It could be a global connect, it doesn't matter, whatever's...
It could be an easy global connect call.
Yeah, that at least...
I just wanna make sure that everybody knows, because it's a big deal.
I gotta ask, I gotta ask by one of the senior citizens on Saturday about it at their meeting, one of those senior citizens stopped me and said, do you know anything about Longwood Gardens? I said, yeah, that part of that.
Yeah, I definitely, yes.
When they were drawn to, I'm gonna match it, what is it for, Mrs. Charles, was it awarded?
I don't know, I think they... That's about all the law, I don't know.
Correct, there are, there's like, twelve or thirteen trees that get decorated by schools or classrooms every year, and we were still at, Michelle, and the group of teachers applied, and we were awarded to decorate one of the trees, and our second grade students exclusively created the ornaments, the garden, and it was just great, a lot of parent volunteers came in.
Mrs. Jazzy, and during the break, could you make sure that Mr. Connor knew all the information, too, because he could put it on our blog for our senior citizens and other community members to see as well?
That's a good idea.
Because anyone's welcome to go, December sixth, we're gonna try and all get there.
I really can go at any time, you know, we don't even wanna limit people, because it's busy, I know people with kids, December sixth is like a lot of breakfast and sand, you know, it's just, it's a busy season. So, it goes through January, so you don't wanna limit people to that day, but that is a day that a lot of us are going up just to show our support. It's hard, though, they want you to commit to like a time, I don't know, if you're gone, yeah, like...
No, I'm hoping that I win them for you.
We have to do a lottery, so, we have to stick tomorrow, but, but they do require, it's hard, I even know like as a parent, I'm going with my family, and I'm like, oh my gosh, what time can I commit to? You know, it's like the Saturday, a few weeks. So they really want you to commit to a time, and, but it's, so it can be really any day, I don't want to limit people to December sixth, whether it's board member students, staff families, or senior citizens, it's, our, our district name will be there, and they'll see the tree no matter what, I mean, it's kind of close quarters, so I don't, I'm not even exactly sure how it will work that day. But it is something super special, they work really hard, and it's just a great recognition, and I mean.
Michelle had done this before, a few years.
She did, yeah, and she just put her heart and soul into it, and she drops everything off, and it's just awesome, she always does. But yes, I will get a little blurb or something.
Would you also like to talk about what you and the staff members would be wearing on Thanksgiving morning, you should hold on.
That is in my board report, yes.
Questions about that, nobody asked, so I didn't know.
Oh, okay, I did put it in there, but I think it's about thirty-five of us from the district, some family members, some employees. We are holding a Horton Hears a Who balloon in the Thanksgiving Day parade in Philadelphia, so, super excited about that, I think I'll put it on my resume, what do you get to wear?
That's awesome.
No, apparently we're.
Very strict, very strict dress code.
But, it's like, Crystal wore, kind of found the opportunity, and we all kind of said, oh my gosh, we'll do it, and so we're all meeting, have to be there early in the morning. It's just fun, a lot, lots of outfits, you have to be eighteen or over.
And you know what happens, right? You've been to the parade?
Yes, I've been to the parade.
So you know about spinning.
Yes, we got a spin, we believe.
Spinning, yeah.
Everybody chants, spin it, spin it, spin it.
I don't know how much.
Don't mess up, that's what we're saying. Once I hear you there, I will, I'll be at the football game and training, working.
And all of the adults have to run in a circle to make Horton will spin in a circle.
It's just fun, it's just a great, like, just for the, in culture of the district, legality.
Now, my question is, you had volunteers from all three buildings?
Yes.
That's great.
Yeah, all three buildings, Krista just basically put out an email last, if anyone was interested, and we had a lot of people show interest. Some people went to the training, I missed that.
I went to the training.
What?
I went to the training.
There you are. So, it is, it's gonna be a really fun day.
Want to have a spin, you know.
Yeah, we had a spin it, we had a.
Oh my goodness.
Oh yeah, you had, you had to.
Just for a quick, before we, before there's another question, we're sorry.
Yeah, just on public relations, last board meeting, we talked about, it would be positive for the board to begin attending the, the council meetings here in town. So what I'm asking is, for our December board meeting, if we could have the calendar for the two thousand fifteen year of council meetings, and maybe a sign up sheet.
It's not yet, it, that.
Well, hopefully by next month, might be.
Their year.
No, their year happens in January, so in January is when they name their meetings.
Alright, well then, in January, we'll have a listing so that we can sign up and start attending these meetings, and I think our conversation is where we tried to get two board members, you know, each month to go out to that meeting.
Yep, that's not a problem, good idea.
I want them to see that we're just in what they're doing, the decisions they're making, and hopefully they'll begin to come back to our meetings again, and show an interest in what we're trying to do for our children.
Good, any other questions, issues, concerns? We can take a two-minute recess, no? Need a motion to adjourn the work session?
A motion.
Motion made by Chaz, seconded by Maria, all in favor?
Aye.